It feels the presence of this meeting, we thank you, Lord. Only you knows what we are set to accomplish today. And only you can see the perfect detail in every end and every beginning. Your righteousness transcends our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in you who have made us to be. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
The Chair would now start the roll-up calls.
Mister Chair, I move to dispense with the roll.
Second.
Upon motion duly seconded, the calling of the roll is dispensed with. And at this point, we will go to the approval of the minutes of the previous committee meeting.
Mister Chair, I move for the approval of the previous meeting. So move Mister Chair.
Second.
Upon a motion duly seconded, the reading of the previous committee meeting is dispensed with, and the same is approved. Good morning, everyone. The Chair would like to recognize the following distinguished House members who are present today. I recognize the presence of Honorable Stella Luz Kimbo, Second District of Marikina. Also, the presence of Honorable Josephine J. Laxonwell, Long District of Amalaban. And over Zoom, I recognize the presence of Honorable Banifacio Bosita, One Rider Partelist, Honorable Yelo Yugrigas, Long District of Catanduanes. Honorable Jenny Jet Nisai of Pusong Pinoy Partelist. Honorable J.C. Avalos of Four Piece Partelist. Honorable Deputy Majority Leader. Honorable Jeanette Garin of First District Iluilo. Honorable Ernesto Janesha Junior, First District Manila. Honorable Laarni Roque of Fourth District Bukidnon. Honorable Adrian Advincula, Third District Cavite. Honorable Maria Carmen Zamora of First District Davao de Oro. Honorable Joselyn Tulfo of Act CIS Partelist. Honorable Maria Lucille Nava, Long District of Gimaras. Honorable Franz Pomarin of Third District Queson City. Honorable Rodolfo Ordanes of Senior Citizens Partelist. Honorable Daphne Lagon, Sixth District Cebu City. Honorable Eleonore Bulut Begtang of Long District of Apayao. Honorable Dante Garcia, Second District La Onion. Honorable Agostina Pancho, Second District Bulacan. Honorable Florida Robes of San Jose del Monte City. Honorable Ricardo Cruz, First District Tagig Pateros. Honorable Charis Ann Hernandez of Long District Calamba City. Honorable Wilter Palma, First District Sambanga Cibugay. Honorable Salvador Plato of Second Six District Bulacan. Honorable Maria Janina, Jamina Catherine Agarao of Fourth District Laguna. And Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez of Second District Laguna. So at this point, we'd like to recognize, the Chair would like to recognize the presence of our resource persons. The Chair is directing our committee secretary to recognize our resource persons.
Good morning. Welcome to our resource persons. They are the following. From the Department of Health, Dr. Rochelle Pambeal, Dr. Manuel Valesteros, Dr. Joseph John Formoso, Mr. Edgar Hilarno, Director Roderick Napulan, Dr. Ronald Lau, and Mr. Vincent Sumerikito. From the Phil Health, we have Dr. Albert Francis Domingo. From the Department of Budget and Management, Mr. Justin Bouisir, Ms. Jimmy Libuke, and Mr. Ariel De Reep. From the Professional Regulation Commission, with us is Dr. Melinda Garcia. From the Commission on Higher Education, Dr. Arturo De León. From the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Indian Now or Bar, with us is Dr. Shal Malin Angpatuan. From the Department of Information and Communications Technology, with us is Director Aris Joseph Hagina. From the Philippine Dental Association, with us is Dr. Cheryl Del Rosario and Dr. Artemio Licos. From the Civil Service Commission, with us is Attorney Catherine Lumare Del Moro. And lastly, from the Department of Migrant Workers, with us is Mr. Paul Kabugao. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, distinguished colleagues and esteemed guests. In the agenda of the committee meeting for today, are one bill of national significance, four bills declaring special holidays, and a local bill of equal importance. In the interest of time, let us immediately proceed with the consideration of the bills. And with the presence of the authors of several bills, we'd like to accommodate first the House Bill 2248 entitled "An Act Declaring March 15 of Every Year as National Frontliners Day" by Representative Stella Luz Kimbo, Second District Marikina City.
Salama, Mister Chair. Thank you for your kind consideration. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. I filed this bill declaring March 15 as a national frontliners day as a way to thank and remember the heroism of the healthcare workers during the pandemic. Last March 15, 2020, we began calling them frontliners. And if you recall, that was the first day of our lockdown. And true enough, as we entered the war against COVID-19, they were our first line of defense. Huwag sanan natin kalimutan na sagyerang iyan ang frontliners ang promotek sa sambayan ng Pilipino. 24/7 silang naglingkod sa atin. They had to leave their families for the sake of service, even sacrificing their own lives. According to the WHO, 104 Filipino healthcare workers died of COVID-19 in 2020 to 2021. They are our fallen heroes who sacrificed their lives for our healing and safety. Up until their very last breath, naglilingkod sila. Hindi man lang nila nayakap o nakasama ang kanilang pamilya. Until now, our frontliners are still facing problems in the health sector such as low salaries and poor working conditions. Kulang nakulang din ang ating frontliners that even the DOH itself declared that it will take 12 up to 23 years to fill the gap in nurses and doctors shortage respectively. As we fail to address these problems, our frontliners are continuously exposed to poorer working environment. So I call on my colleagues to join me in remembering March 15 as the beginning of our frontliners hardest battles. And in the words of our President, President Ferdinand Marcus Junior, kung hindi dahil sa tapang ng ating mga frontliners nung ikalabing lima or beginning the 15th of March 2020, marahil ay tuluyan na nga ang tumigil ang ating mundo. More importantly, declaring March 15 as a national frontliners day, this shall serve as a promise to our frontliners that we will relentlessly fight for our improved working, for their improved working conditions and adequate compensation. Every year, as we remember their heroism, we as a nation must also remember to address their needs as a sector. Our frontliners serve with their hearts. They bring us to this world, take care of us when we are ill, and make sure we are comfortable until our very last days on earth. It is our duty to do the same for them. Salamat, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative Stella Luz Kimbo. We'd like to, of course, hear the views of our resource persons from the DOH. But before that, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Marco from Long District Baguio City, Honorable Mirico of Long District Kereno, Honorable Yvonne Jenny Vicente Imano of Second District Misamis Oriental, Honorable Ray Florence Reyes of Anak Kalusugan Partelist. With us here, physically present, Honorable Joseph Gilbert Violago, Second District Nueva Isia, and Honorable Victoria Copilar of Sixth District Queson. Now, let us hear Director Rod Napulan from Department of Health.
Good morning, Mister Chair. Good morning, Kong Peter Miguel. And of course, to our sponsor, Kong Stella Kimbo, good morning, and the rest of the House of Representatives members of the Committee on Health. So the Department of Health through the administrative service highly admires and fully supports the intent of the House Bill Number 2248 for an act declaring March 15 of every year as National Frontliners Day, which aims to honor and recognize the immaterial sacrifice performed by the COVID-19 frontliners in delivering public health, safety, and welfare services, maintaining public order, and allowing the economy to continuously operate. Based on the data of COVID-19 compensation claims that we gathered, there were more than 150,000 healthcare workers contracted with COVID-19 from 2020 up to present and already filed for compensation. There were 428 healthcare workers who died due to COVID-19. 151,934 contracted COVID-19 as mild and moderate, and 1,257 severe and critical COVID cases. With this, with this bill, we can highly emphasize the importance as well as the efforts of all our healthcare workers, as well as for all of other frontliners. So we respectfully submit Madam Chair and fully support this bill. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mister Chair and Madam Sponsor.
Thank you very much, Director Rod Napulan. May we hear any comments from the authors or from the members of this committee? Honorable Marco.
Yeah, Mister Chair, there is another similar bill, although the date of the celebration is March 22 as against the March 15 of Congresswoman Kimbo. I would suggest that we allow the proponent of this measure to sponsor the bill so we can discuss both of the bills, Mister Chair.
Honorable, thank you very much, Honorable Marco. There is a suggestion for the proponent to sponsor also this similar bill. House Bill Number 6335 by Representative Wilbert Lee. Since Representative Wilbert Lee is not around, Congressman Marco, you may sponsor this bill.
Okay, in behalf of Congressman Wilbert Lee, I would like to move that the explanatory note of House Bill 6335 be adopted as the sponsorship message of Congressman Wilbert Lee, Mister Chair.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved. The House Bill 6635 is part of act into consideration. So without any questions with regard to our two bills with the same content, may we hear and a motion for approval of this bill?
Mister Chair, before we approve the two bills, there are two items that I would like to point out. First, the date, March 22 and March 15. And the other one is instead of calling them frontliners, your other bill is to call them COVID-19 Filipino healthcare workers, Mister Chair. If we note here with the proposal of Congresswoman Kimbo, it is broader in scope because it covers all frontliners, not only health workers. Because we have a lot of people who got involved as workers during the COVID-19 pandemic, like some military personnel, non-healthcare workers were involved also. So I think we might just as well use the term used by Congresswoman Kimbo that it should be called the frontliners instead of COVID-19 Filipino healthcare workers, Mister Chair. As far as the name is concerned, on the other hand, on the issue of March 22 or March 15, what is the appropriate date that we should consider? And I think Congresswoman Kimbo has a better explanation of why March 15 is considered as the time that we should declare as the special day for our frontliners, Mister Chair.
Is it was the official start of the lockdown?
Yes.
So is there a common ground right now that the nomenclature for, as far as the title is concerned, should be a National Frontliners Day?
Yes, Mister Chair.
And the date, so may I hear a motion for on that effect?
So if I may be allowed, if there are no more question on this particular measure, I would like to move that we approve the two bills, 6335 and 2248 with the measure of Congresswoman Kimbo be adopted as the lead bill and approve the same, Mister Chair.
Second, Mister Chair.
Any objection? There being none. House Bill 228 and 6635 is hereby approved. We go next to the bill.
Mister Chair, so we will not come back anymore and talk of the same bills. I would like to propose also as a motion to approve also the committee report of these two bills, as I stated earlier, Mister Chair.
There's a motion for approval of this committee report. Duly seconded, the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I, may I move also that all members present be made co-authors of the, of this bill, Mister Chair? Second, Mister Chair.
There's a motion that those who are present in physically and in Zoom be made as a co-author. Since there's no objection, the motion is here approved. Now we go next to the bill, House Bill 7947, "An Act Declaring May 23 of Every Year as National Cervical Cancer Screening Day" by Representative Stella Luz Kimbo.
Salamat, mula, Mister Chair, for taking up this measure. Every year, 7,897 Filipinas are diagnosed with cervical cancer and 4,052 die from the disease. This roughly translates to about 12 deaths per day. Cervical cancer often goes undetected until its advanced stages, when women are left with limited options. But this should not be the case. Cervical cancer is a preventable disease, and early screening is crucial to combat it. More than awareness, early detection through screening is necessary. While the month of May has been declared as Cervical Cancer Prevention Awareness Month, there should be a day designated to encourage women to be screened. So the establishment of May 23 as a National Cervical Cancer Screening Day will complement the efforts of DOH and bring us closer to the goal of eliminating cervical cancer in the Philippines. The proposed bill will encourage government agencies and LGUs to conduct public education and awareness campaigns to motivate women to get screened. It will also mandate the provision of free or low-cost screening services to underserved and marginalized populations. Through early detection, we can prevent disease progression and put forward cost-effective interventions. Pag may early screening, mas maaga natin maagapan ang sakit na maaaring pagdaanan ang ating mga kababaihan. Also, by providing support to women through accessible screening programs and information campaigns, we empower them to take charge of their health. So with the help of the members of this committee, we will not only support women to lead healthier lives, we will also invest in the health of the backbone of our families, communities, and our economy. I respectfully submit for consideration to the Committee on Health the approval of House Bill 7947, also known as the National Cervical Cancer Screening Day Act of 2023. Samo-sama po tayo para sa kalusugan ng kababaihan at ng bayan. Salamat po, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative Stella Luz Kimbo. And now we'll hear the DOH's recommendation, comments. Let us hear Mister Vincent Sumerikito.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good morning, Mister Chair and members and esteemed members of the House. The Department of Health recognizes the importance of intensifying cervical cancer initiatives in the country, knowing that currently cervical cancer is the second-leading cancer among women here in the Philippines, and is also considered as one of the preventable and treatable cancers through vaccination and early screening. As such, under Proclamation 368 Series of 2003 and Republic Act 11215 or the National Integrated Cancer Control Act and its implementing rules and regulations, the celebration of Cervical Cancer Awareness Month every May of each year is one critical national advocacy that highlights various ways in managing cervical cancer that include HPV vaccination, early cervical screening and treatment of pre-cancerous lesions, and provision of accessible and affordable cervical cancer drugs. Given this and other logistical and human resource needs, the Department of Health welcomes initiatives of our stakeholders and partners that are streamlined with our current national celebrations in line with the existing cancer law. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Mister Vincent Sumerikito. And at this point, we'd like to hear any comments from the committee, from the authors. Since there's none, we may, I may hear, you may, I may approval of this bill? Motion for approval?
Mister Chair, you're looking at me.
Okay.
Considering that this is a very loadable and bill, Mister Chair, I would like to move, of course, after hearing the Department of Health on their approval of this measure, I would like to move that we approve House Bill 7947. Wala na siguro amendment dito, Mister Chair. I move for its approval, Mister Chair.
Second, Mister Chair.
There's a motion duly seconded, "An Act Declaring May 23 of Every Year as National Cervical Cancer Screening Day" by Representative Stella Luz Kimbo is hereby approved.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Laarni Roque.
May I make a motion that all the representatives who are present here and on Zoom be made co-authors of this bill with the permission of the author? Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion that making the presence of all representatives, I assume, and physical presence would be the co-author of this bill. Duly seconded, so the motion is hereby approved. I'd like to recognize the presence online of following members. Honorable Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez of One Rider Partelist. Honorable Carl Nicolas Cari of Fifth District Leyte. Honorable Joseph Giorgio Olara of Third District Kagayan. Honorable Baby Eline Vargas Alfonso of Second District Kagayan. And at this point, we'll go to House Bill 3036, "An Act Declaring July 17 of Every Year as a Special Non-Working Holiday" to be known as the National Cardiac Pulmonary Resuscitation Day by Representative Edward Vera Perez Maseda. Let us turn now to Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maseda via Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Mister Chair and to all my colleagues. One of the leading causes of death in the Philippines is cardiac arrest, which can be described in many ways, but one way of describing it is sometimes it's an electrical malfunction in the heart that causes an irregular heartbeat or arrhythmia and disrupts flow to the blood, flow of blood to the brain, lungs, and other organs. When a person has a cardiac arrest, survival depends on immediately getting CPR from someone nearby. Almost 90% of people who suffer out of hospital cardiac arrests die, especially if CPR is not immediately provided. However, in the alternative, CPR, especially if provided in the first few minutes of cardiac arrest, within cardiac arrest, can double or sometimes even triple a person's chance of survival. It's worthy to note that Republic Act 10871 authored by former Congressman Josele Yen Giao was drafted and lapsed into law on July 17, 2016. The law known as the Samboy Lim Law and the Basic Life Support Training in Schools Act mandates both private and public schools to provide their students with basic life support training through the use of psychomotor training. RA 710871 passed on July 17, paved the way for a CPR-ready Philippines. This is because of this, as this bill proposes to declare July 17 of every year, I'd like to make a short amendment as a special working holiday. Being the Chair of the Committee on Revision of Laws, several holidays have been referred to by committee, and we have already passed into law several holidays. And except in certain circumstances, we have, we see the, the importance of making the holiday a working holiday instead of a non-working holiday. Because the ECOB, or the Employers Association, as well as the NEDA and the DOF have intimated during our hearings in my committee that the economic impact of making a non-working holiday. So I will, I will agree to, or I will agree to making this a special working holiday. Para hindi naman mahirapan ang ating mga empleyado at mga kababayan. So thank you, Mister Chair, and I hope my colleagues in the committee So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I hope my colleagues in the Committee on Health may support me in this, in this bill. Ramis salamat po.
Salamat po, Representative Edward Vera Perez Maceda, Fourth District Manila. At this point, I'd like to recognize the presence, I assume, of Honorable Romo洛kid Peña of First District Makari. So I'd like to hear our resource person, Dr. Ronald Lo from Department of Health.
Pleasant morning, Mr. Chair, especially to Congressman Edward Perez Maceda for sponsoring this bill and to the distinguished members of this Committee on Health. The Department of Health recognizes the public health burden of cardiac arrest and the health, economic, and social repercussions that it brings not only to Filipino individuals, but also to their families and loved ones. Thus, the Department of Health welcomes this House Bill 3036 to declare July 17 of every year as National Cardiopulmonary Resuscitation Day. CPR, when done in a timely and proper manner, can prolong the lives of many Filipinos. Cardiac arrest can happen anytime, inside the house, in public places, where medical expertise and equipment may not be sufficient. But with CPR, with many people knowing how to do it, we can increase the chances of survival of many Filipinos. This proclamation, we believe, will create a wider awareness of the value of cardiopulmonary resuscitation, the importance of being CPR-ready in the Filipino society, at home, in the workplace, in public places, and the need for strategic interventions to allocate resources and improve the practice of cardiopulmonary resuscitation. The Department of Health fully supports this move and vows to strengthen our policies, plans, and programs to concretize the vision of a CPR-ready Philippines. We will sustain our good relationship with our stakeholders and will continuously allocate resources to institute a more comprehensive public health program to this end. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ronald Lo from Department of Health. So any comments from the committee? Representative Marco?
Yeah, well, if there are no objection, Mr. Chair, I would like to move for the approval of House Bill 3036, as amended by the proponent of this bill, making it now a special working day to be known as the National Cardiopulmonary Resuscitation Day, Mr. Chair. I so moved, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Julie seconded. Any objection? There being none. An act declaring July 17 of every year as special working day to every, to be known as the National Cardiopulmonary Resuscitation Day by Representative Edward Vera Perez Maceda is hereby approved, as amended. When we proceed with House Bill...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Marami salamat po.
Honorable Edward Maceda?
Marami salamat po kumamarapatin ng mga kasamahan koong mambabatas na nandyan dyan ngayon at sa Zoom kung na maging ko-principal author ay kalulugod ko po.
There's a motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Julie seconded. The inclusion of all the presence, the presence of all members here via Zoom or physical presence as a co-author of this bill is hereby approved.
Salamat po. Thank you.
Wala ka naman po, Honorable Edward Maceda.
Salamat, Kong Marco.
As we move on, we'll go to a one local bill, House Bill Number 8190, an act establishing a specialty hospital in municipality of Lupao, Province of Nueva Ecija, to be known as the Lupao Dr. Eliotero R. Violago Mother and Child Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Joseph Gilbert Violago, Second District Nueva Ecija.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good morning to my colleagues and to our resource speakers. Mr. Chair, I'm sponsoring House Bill 8190. This bill seeks to create a 100-bed specialty hospital in the municipality of Lupao, Province of Nueva Ecija, to be known as the Lupao Mother and Child Medical Center, which shall be under the direct control and supervision of the Department of Health. The proposed specialty hospital is envisioned to cater specifically for the care of mothers, women, and children, and all their medical needs. Mr. Chair, according to the 2020 PSA Census, the province of Nueva Ecija has 2.3 million inhabitants. As for the local government units comprising the Second District of Nueva Ecija, the total population is around half million. However, at present, there are no specialty hospitals dedicated to mothers and children in the locality. For this reason, the constituents are forced to travel to other places, thus incurring additional expenses because the current healthcare system in the area cannot accommodate all the patients' needs, especially the care that only specialty hospitals for mother and children can provide. Thus, Mr. Chair, it is with great hope and that my constituents, especially the mothers and women and children in Nueva Ecija and neighboring areas will have access to quality, safe, and affordable medical care. In view of foregoing, Mr. Chair, this representation seek the immediate passage of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative Joseph Gilbert Violago. Let us hear now our resource person from Department of Health, Mr. Julius Caesar Castilio.
Good morning to the committee chairperson and to all honorable representatives present. The DOH acknowledges and supports the intent of House Bill Number 8190, establishing the Lupao Dr. Eliotero R. Violago Mother and Child Medical Center, as filed by Representative Joseph Gilbert Violago of the Second District of Nueva Ecija, and recommends further assessment of the measure. The department will submit its recommendations through an official opposition paper signed by the Secretary of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Julius Castilio. At this point?
Mr. Chair, may we know the initial position of the Department of Health prior to the official document that will be submitted so we can act today, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Castilio, you may answer your question.
May I request a moment lang po, just to discuss with, a moment lang po.
Well, we will get back to you, sir, in a few minutes. Any other comments from the members, from the committee, or the author?
Kong Joseph, may I ask, you have already identified a place for the establishment of the Yes, Mr. Chair. Medical center. There's a dedicated lot for this purpose, Mr. Chair. A more than one hectare, Mr. Chair. Okay, that's good. And you think that you can get funding from the government through the GA, probably? Uh, Mr. Chair, the lot is, will be donated by the family, Mr. Chair, to the DOH so that only the funds for the hospital will be needed. But for, only for the construction, but not for acquiring the lot, Mr. Chair. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other? So I may go back to our resource person, Sir Julius Castilio. We're waiting, one-minute suspension for decision.
If I might, may I add, Mr. Chair?
Proceed, Mr. Chair.
The...
Session resumed, Honorable Violago.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, currently, the proposed site is also being used because it's a three-hectare lot. Currently, it's also being used as an isolation area of the Second District, wherein portable containers were built in that site for isolation due to the COVID pandemic. I think there are some five or six containers right now there. So if we're gonna practically use the whole lot as for medical services, it's very ideal, Mr. Chair.
So from DOH, still, we're waiting for comments to the question whether they have an initial stand prior to today's meeting. A one-minute suspension. Yes, session is resumed. Honorable Mr. Castilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies for the delay. Considering that there are externalities that will have to be discussed with the DOH Exocom, I apologize, but I would have to, uh, still, sorry, remain with my earlier statement that we will be submitting a position paper once these concerns have been finished to be discussed by the Exocom. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Sir, Mr. Julius Castilio. The rates, Honorable Marco?
Yeah, taking note of what has been mentioned by the Department of Health, I would like to anyway move for the approval of this measure subject to whatever requirements that may be imposed by the Department of Health in the establishment of the Mother and Child Medical Center in the municipality of Lupao, Province of Nueva Ecija, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Julie seconded. So any objection? There having none. The, an act establishing a specialty hospital in municipality of Lupao, Lupao, Province of Nueva Ecija, to be known as the Lupao Mother and Child Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Joseph Gilbert Violago is hereby approved, subject to the regulatory requirements by the Department of Health.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
A one-minute suspension.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Roque?
May I move that all the members who are present right now here and in Zoom be made co-authors of the said bill, of Bill Number 8190, with the permission of the author, Mr. Chair.
Session resumed. There's a motion, include the inclusion of all present members as co-authors. Any second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion duly seconded. The inclusion of all the present members is hereby approved. Okay, so we'll go to the next agenda. And that is the bills institutionalizing a national oral health program. This bill institutionalizing oral health program according to the National Monitoring and Evaluation for Dental Survey, or NMEDS, indicates that 87.4 of Filipinos suffer from tooth decay or dental cavities. Sugary, carboidated foods and processed foods, coupled with emotional stress during the pandemic, have caused increased, thank you po, have caused increased incidences of tooth decay or cavities. Moreover, the country's aging population, which accounts 8.2%, has also contributed to the demand for better and more accessible dental services. In line with the Republic Act 11223, or the Universal Healthcare Act, the proposed measures aim to strengthen oral health services in the country by scaling up essential programs and increasing investments to make oral health promotion, disease prevention, quality treatment, and care more accessible, equitable, and affordable for all Filipinos. As proposed, the bill provides for oral health services in every region of the country through the Centers for Health Development by providing a basic package of essential oral health services for every lifecycle group and by undertaking outreach programs and activities in unserved and underserved areas of the country. Public information education programs on oral hygiene and training and capability programs for oral health providers in both public and private hospitals. To this end, the Oral Health Division under Department of Health shall be strengthened. Oral health units shall be established in every rural health unit, which shall be composed of public health dentists and a trained barangay health worker, who shall serve as a dental aide and assist in oral health care promotion. Moreover, the proposed measure incorporates oral health in the standards, licensing, regulation, quality assurance, monitoring, and evaluation of health facilities. For the information of the honorable members of the committee, the proposed measure is institutionalizing a national oral health program has been extensively discussed and subsequently approved in the 18th Congress. Unfortunately, there was not enough time for the plenary deliberations. Copies of the bills and matrix relative thereto have been distributed to all members of the committee. So let's now proceed with the recognition of the authors and their sponsorship speeches. So to start off with us here, House Bill 3162, Representative Josephine J. Lacson Noel and Florencio Gabriel Ben Noel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair and my distinguished colleagues and our guests. To further emphasize that there's so much to be done, allow me to state more facts. The Filipinos' oral hygiene and dental health is limited to simple brushing routines with any toothpaste available. Dental care is the least of our worries. Filipinos tend to downplay the importance of dental health and suffers the painful consequences of toothache or loss of tooth because visiting a public dentist could be a waste of so much time while a private dental practitioner is costly. The 1987 Philippine Constitution declared policy of the state to protect and promote the right to health, instill health consciousness, and ensure access and delivery of quality oral health, quality oral health care services to all Filipinos. With that being said, as early as 1963, the government has already enacted Republic Act Number 3814, which established the Bureau of Dental Health Services under the Department of Health. The Bureau was given the tasks of protecting the dental health and oral hygiene of Filipinos and the maintenance of an adequate standard of dental health services and the improvement of such standards. However, by virtue However, by virtue of Executive Order Number 119 Series of 1987, otherwise known as the Reorganization Act of the Ministry of Health, the Bureau of Dental Health Services was converted into the Dental Health Service under the Office for Public Health Services. In 2003, the National Policy on Oral Health by the DOH mandated local government units to implement oral health programs and covers policies and guidelines that apply to all government and non-government health institutions whose functions and activities contribute to the improvement of oral health. While the delivery of basic oral health care became the responsibility of the local government, oral health program is also not a priority of the LGUs. Oral health program was given its own limited budget. Sadly, it cannot meet the perceived oral health needs and treatment demands of the entire populace. Access to Philippine oral health-related statistics have been very difficult due to the absence of an effectively implemented data monitoring system. This means that the government do not have a concrete basis to how much dental and oral supplies one community needs, leading to a deficient delivery of dental services. It is with the foregoing that this bill seeks the following: to reinstate the Bureau of Dental Health to monitor systematically and ensure that programs and initiatives are focused to address the dental problems and our health issues. To make dental and oral health programs one of the government's priorities by strengthening collaboration between the national government through the Bureau of Dental Health and the local government units. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am respectfully counting on the support of the committee for the speedy and favorable consideration of this measure.
Thank you very much, Representative Josephine Laxon Noel, Long District, Malabon. Yes, Honorable Laxon Noel.
Yeah, before we ask for the comment from our guests, may I also raise my questions now so that they can answer it all and-
Please proceed with your question.
Okay, under Executive Order Number 119, former President Corazon C. Aquino converted the Bureau of Dental Health Services into the Dental Health Service under the Office for Public Health Services, as I mentioned earlier. My questions are: What are the existing dental health programs implemented by the DOH? What is the ratio of dentists to patients? What are the prevalent diseases concerning dental and oral health of Filipinos? Because, Mr. Chair, I want, I would want to know what happened to the Bureau of Dental Services when it was converted to Dental Health Service? And if the present existing programs are enough to improve the oral and dental problems of all Filipinos? Number two, currently, the Oral Health Division is under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau of the Department of Health, correct? Okay, under the said bureau, Director III for Technical Integration has the primary duty to operationalize and lead the integrated primary care for oral health, correct? Okay, the oral disease continues to be a serious public health problem in the country and the prevalence of dental caries on permanent teeth has generally, has generally been high throughout the years. What are the objectives and targets of the said bureau to reduce the prevalence of dental caries? Is the director in charge for Oral Health Division even a dentist? Number of dentists currently employed under the DOH? Who is currently the head of Dental Health Service? Is he or she a practicing dentist? Are the programs and targets even realistic? Mr. Speaker and dear colleagues, I would like to point out that in the presence of a Bureau of Dental Services in the DOH, we shall have one bureau that understands oral and dental health problems and issues of our countries. Upon its absence, we do not have, we do not have realistic programs to roll out to our constituency, more so the welfare also of our dentists in public health service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Josephine Laxon Noel. Before we proceed with an answer from our source person, I'd like with the indulgence of Honorable Laxon Noel, we'll just proceed briefly to the author of the same of the bill, House Bill 1487, Representative Maria Renea Lourdes Matibag, for her sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just add, as for my sponsorships bill for House Bill Number 1487, this is to iterate that through the years, our country has made gains in ensuring the promotion and protection of our people's health. However, several gaps remain, including the lack of an institutional means of promoting and ensuring the dental health of every Filipino. Almost entire communities in the country suffer from two of the most prevalent of dental diseases, tooth decay and gum disease. With more than ninety-two percent of Filipino reported to be suffering from tooth decay or cavities while more than seventy-eight percent have gum diseases, we must find ways of immediate address on this concern. This proposed bill, Chair, aims to reverse the situation by creating a dental unit in each of the rural health units listed under the Department of Health as part of the country's overall primary health care strategy. By ensuring through legislation that each RHU under the DOH has at least one dentist serving the priority target of dental health services. Filipino citizens will greatly benefit from early detection, prevention, and treatment of dental health issues, giving our people more reasons to smile. I just want to also include, Mr. Chair, that the dentist and the dental society here in San Pedro is very eager and aggressive in pushing this bill. Thereby, Mr. Chair, to my distinct colleagues, this immediate passage of the bill is earnestly sought in this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Maria Renea Lourdes Matibag. And there is a manifestation from several authors of similar bills, House Bill Number 1104, House Bill 1945, House Bill 2520, House Bill 3986, and House Bill 5095, that their explanatory notes be considered as their sponsorship speech. At this point, let us proceed with comments, but before that, I'd like to acknowledge the presence by a show of Honorable Maria Vanessa Abentado from Second District, Bohol, as well as the physical presence of Honorable Franz Castro of ACT, teacher's party list. So let us hear from the Department of Health, Mr.?
Dr. Manuel Valiesteros.
Dr. Manuel Valiesteros, for the response as to the numerous questions posted by Honorable Josephine Laxon Noel. Thank you.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Chair, and all the esteemed members of the House. If I may read the position paper of DOH.
Just proceed with the position paper, DOH.
So the Department of Health fully supports the aims and objectives of the aforementioned bills, which seek to strengthen the delivery of oral services in DOH's endeavor to achieve UHC in the country. We recommend a shift from the traditional curative approach towards a preventive approach that includes promotion of oral health within the family, schools, and workplaces aligned with the Universal Healthcare Act. The proposed bills aim to attain and set the overall direction as it outlines a concept of integration, promotion, prevention, and control of oral diseases and other health concerns with the overall health and access to oral health care. Here in the Philippines, oral disease continues to be a serious public health problem. Seventy-three million ponga Pilipino, they suffer from dental caries. Forty-two percent or forty-two percent of Filipinos have not even seen a dentist and fifty percent, kahit may problema na, hindi pa rin sila pumupunta sa dentista. We also support the proposed bills to amend or modify the Rural Health Act for creation of dental units in every RHU, the establishment of a dental home that will complement the provision of primary oral health care, which is basically primary care wherein services are delivered, the essential services are delivered continuously, accessible, coordinated with the health system, and in a family-centered way. So dental home also addresses anticipatory guidance, preventive and acute comprehensive oral health care, which includes referral to the dental specialist when appropriate. And the dental home is a better alternative and a more excellent option in providing health care than the conduct of dental bunot missions where infection prevention and control cannot be observed and implemented. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Valiesteros. There were, a while ago, there were questions posed by Representative Laxon Noel. So can you offer your position or your answer on that?
Yes, Your Honor, the creation of the Bureau of Dental Services was last 1963 and ever since then, 'yung health, 'yung dental bureau na parang na downgrade siya into ano, to Family Health Division. So, right now kasi po, dahil sa nagkakaroon ng restructuring against the Department of Health because of the Universal Healthcare Law. So the direction of the Department of Health is integration, integration of oral health across all life stages and all health services. So, right now, one of your questions is, is dentist leading the oral health division? Actually, ma'am, ako po 'yung nag-apply sa oral health division. I am a pediatric dentist. Ako po 'yung nag-apply sa oral health division, but when I got into DOH, there's already integration happening because when you talk of primary care kasi, kailangan integrated na walang health issue left behind. At kadalasan po talaga, naiiwan ang oral health, lalo na pagprogrammatic, kasi nga wala akong budget and oral health is really a last priority. But then, ma'am, kasi sa integration, there are advantages. Kasi nga yun ho, bilang oral health division ako, because nagkaroon nga ng restructuring, ginawa po akong division chief ng child, adolescent maternal health division. So there are advantages po, kasi nai-integrate namin po ang oral health across all life stages, across all health issues. Kaya mas napapansin na po ngayon ang oral health. Now, the chief division is under the Director III and Director IV. So pag decision-making po, ang talagang merong capacity to decide are really our directors. So ako po bilang division chief ng child maternal oral health, nutrition, more on management, and all the deliverables are met, but decisions are made from the director's office.
Thank you for that. Do you hear any reaction from our distinguished Honorable Josephine Laxon Noel?
So doon po ba sa mga directors ng ninyo ay may dentista?
Wala po.
Exactly. Kaya nga po namin na gusto nitong bureau na'to para merong specifically na department or bureau na nagko-concentrate po sa needs ng oral health.
Thank you. Any other comments?
May paluap question lang ako. Ilan po ang dentist natin sa buong Pilipinas serving itong mga iba't ibang ospital at saka health centers ng ating gobyerno?
Your Honor, the statistics, there's only one dentist for every fifty thousand population.
So ilan po 'yung dentista natin sa buong Pilipinas?
Four thousand.
We have twenty, just thirty thousand.
We have thirty thousand registered dentists from the-
Hindi po. Yung pong nagtatrabaho ngayon sa gobyerno under the Department of Health.
Your Honor, there are two thousand two hundred seventy-six primary care dentists, two thousand two hundred seventy-six, and one thousand forty. So the total number of primary care dentists is four thousand four hundred forty-five po.
And these are all spread all over the country. Ano pong pinakamaraming asang area sa buong Pilipinas? Ito ba'y concentrated sa mga ciudad, sa mga probinsya, sa municipyo?
Your Honor, lahat, almost all dentists are concentrated in cities.
Sa cities.
Kulang na kulang po doon sa mga Gidas, 'yung mga geographically isolated disadvantaged areas.
Kasi 'yung nabanggit po ninyo kanina, Mr. Chair, na ang focus supposedly is to be preventive, ano po? Ano bang efforts ang ginagawa ngayon ng DOH to ensure that we carry the plan of preventing the occurrence of dental caries, problems sa oral hygiene ng mga tao?
Yes, Your Honor, that's why we are really pushing that every municipality or ano, has a rural health dentist. Kasi isang importante ho, there are three factors para ma-improve po 'yung ating oral health status. Number one, kung ano'y kinakain natin, so sugar is the main cause of dental diseases. Number two, 'yung oral hygiene, 'yung pagto-toothbrush ng fluoride toothpaste. And number three, napaka-importante po na bawat Pilipino mayroong access sa primary care, and this is provided by the dentist. Kasi doon sa primary care, ideally po, dapat may napupuntahan ho 'yung bawat Pinoy sa health center na dentista with a functional dental health clinic for prevention, at least every three to four months. Kaya 'yung point tinatawag namin, may dental home na may binabalik-balikan po sila sa rural health unit para matugunan 'yung prevention. Hindi lang puro, kasi ang nagiging nangyari po ngayon, puro reactive, pag masakit ang ipin, bunot. And when actually, sir, what we are really promoting is preventable kung ma-reinforce lang 'yung tatlo, hygiene, diet, and access to primary care. And basic primary care is cost-effective, madali, non-invasive. Kaya lang mo sa kakulongan ng dentista na trained talaga sa public health, eh hindi natutugunan talaga 'yung needs nila.
Okay, paluap-palu. Of course, 'yung dentista, marami tayong private, pwede ba 'yung, let's say, meron tayong bibigay na subsidy sa mga tao? Kasi kung sa gobyerno sila pupunta, eh baka mahirap kasi ano, una, kulang sabi niyo. Meron ba kayong budget sa DOH tungkol dito? Meron ba kayong budget dito na inallocate ng department?
Sir, kasi we are right now developing 'yung sa field health benefit package. I think Dr. Domingo will be able to expound on that as part of the solution dun sa financing, health financing.
Thank you for that.
Yes, pero sumasa nga 'yung kayo dito sa plano na ito, institutionalize 'yung national oral health program ng ating mga kasama rito?
Yes, Your Honor. Ang may reservations lang kami, Your Honor, ay 'yung dental bureau, because that is not the direction of UHC anymore. Kasi there were efforts also na magkaroon ng dental bureau nung 2019. So nag-usap po si President Duterte tsaka ang DOH. And because 'yun, iba nga ho 'yung direction ng UHC, integration, ang bureau po is very programmatic, very siloed, at saka 'yun nga ma-isolate na naman siya, kaya ang ginawa, integration. So, yes, 'yung oral- So, uh, yes, uh, 'yung oral health program, kailangan talaga ma-strengthen talaga.
Pero 'yung baka naman dahil sa integration eh, baka makalimutan, 'yung nabanggit ni Congresswoman Noel, uh, baka makalimutan, less ang priority or least ang priorities na binibigay sa oral hygiene program.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, our recommendation is not the creation of a bureau, but the creation of an oral health council that will really guard the interest of oral health talaga. Yung cons, uh, we can all, uh, parang sila 'yung pool of consultants that can really help.
And the ones that should lead that council would should be a dental practitioner. Oh, kasi kung hindi niya alam 'yung, you know, uh, baka mahirapan.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, I
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much, Dr. Bellis. So we may go back to further discussions, but before that, to me, so we see the overall picture of this bill. Let me hear our other resource person, particularly from Field Health, Dr. Albert Francis Domingo.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair and the honorable members of the committee. Magandang umaga po. On behalf of Acting President and Chief Executive Officer, Emmanuela Desma Junior, and our Senior Vice President for Health Finance and Policy Sector, Dr. Israel Pargas, I propose to Director Albert Domingo uh, to deliver the position, preliminary position of Field Health, which we will also submit in an official paper. Field Health commends the honorable authors of the House bills that all seek to improve the oral health of all Filipinos. Field Health recognizes the importance of oral health as fundamental to and integrated with many other organ systems of the body, the functioning of which will impact on a person's overall health. As of April thirty, two thousand twenty-three, there are seven hundred thirty-two Field Health accredited dentists. Current data also indicates that approximately sixty percent of accredited healthcare institutions are private. Mr. Chair, important po ito, kasi 'yung seven hundred thirty-two Field Health accredited dentists are mostly distributed in private facilities. Pag nagkaroon po tayo ng reconciliation of numbers, kaya po tinitingin ko sa kodeko ng aking D O H colleague, they maintain the count of the universe of dentists, pero hindi po lahat 'yung accredited ng Field Health. Karamihan nung accredited namin ay nasa private practice. There are case rates, Field Health case rates for dental conditions, but almost all of these are curative and often inpatient. Kailangan ma-admit po sa loob ng isang facility bago pumasok 'yung case rate para sa dental condition. Tapos kung papasukin natin 'yung detalye, eto 'yung mga talagang, uh, in, kasi po, in, in medical school, nakakasama rin po namin 'yung mga practicing dentists. Meron talagang dentists in hospitals at meron dentists in outpatient. Yung mga case rates para sa mga dentists or procedures inside the hospitals. Now, upon cursory review of the bills under consideration, Field Health supports and would like to highlight the citation of an integrated and comprehensive approach to health in general and the primary healthcare approach to health service delivery in particular. The Universal Healthcare Act, R A one-one-two-two-three, already guarantees that, open quotation, "Every Filipino shall be granted immediate eligibility and access to care for medical, dental, mental, and emergency health services, provided that the goods and services to be included shall be determined through a fair and transparent H T A process." Close quotation. Etto po ay Section six A ng R A one-one-two-two-three. Thus, Mr. Chair, even under the current legal framework, Field Health is already mandated to expand its benefits as regards dental services. As to how, the U H C Act is also instructive, for it has instructed Field Health to implement what we call a comprehensive outpatient benefit package, which we now call Consulta Plus. Meron pong published Field Health circular available on the internet, which we can provide a copy to the committee, or actually in other hearings po na, na-mention na po namin 'yan, the Consulta Plus, uh, package. Consulta Plus could be expanded to include primary dental care, subject to additional resources that may be provided, of course, by the Honorable Congress. Now, a fair and transparent process to benefit development has three key elements provided for by law. One, the development of standard clinical practice guidelines to be approved by D O H in accordance with Section twenty-seven C of R A one-one-two-two-three. Two, a positive recommendation by the Health Technology Assessment Council for the development of any benefit package by Field Health according to Section thirty-four A of R A one-one-two-two-three. And three, actuarial and feasibility studies by Field Health according to Section twenty-one of R A seven-eight-seven-five as amended, yung pong Charter National Health Insurance Act. These principles we have mentioned are reflected in the language proposed by Section seventeen of House Bill one-one-oh-four, to which we interpose no objection and may even suggest language to strengthen the provision further. As mentioned, the fair and transparent process of benefit development begins with the development of standard clinical practice guidelines. Kailangan po namin malaman kung ano'y babayaran namin. Ang mahirap kasi kung walang clinical practice guidelines, and I am really happy po that the Chair himself is also a physician. Alam po ng mga, parang ambiroan po eh, there are as many approaches to medical practices there are doctors. Sumusod lang po kami kung merong C P Gs, yun 'yung pinakanagiging quote-unquote batas. And it's not even binding, no? It's, it's just the standard of care that must be done. We need to have standard C P Gs to be approved by D O H. Now, Field Health is interested in how the institutional arrangements leading to C P G development will unfold. Will there be a bureau for oral health, which could signal a vertical disease program-focused arrangement distinct from how we see the D O H to be implementing now an integrated approach to C P Gs through the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau? Mr. Chair, ang, ano lang po namin dito observation, if Congress in its wisdom will grant the, uh, the formation of a vertical bureau for oral health, what stops other disease programs from requesting for bureaus? What stops us from creating a bureau for psoriasis, a bureau for tuberculosis, a bureau for maternal and child care? They might start coming po and filing bills, and then we will be faced with a deluge of proposals, which could all be useful. But in health systems practice, usually the vertical approach is done to high burden conditions. Example po, tuberculosis. That's why we have a national T V program. So yun po talaga 'yung magiging, uh, birabantayan ng Field Health. Sino 'yung magsasabi sa amin kung ano 'yung clinical practice guidelines? Yung po ba'y bureau? Or will there be a council of expert and patient representatives similar to how Congress has approached H I V AIDS? Meron po tayong Philippine National AIDS Council. Meron po tayong Mental Health Council. Meron rin po tayong National Integrated Cancer Control Council. So meron na po tayong models and legislation that we can follow. The councils that I have mentioned operate, uh, they are outside the D O H, but they have secretariat inside the D O H. Um, paumanhim po, Mr. Chair, pero, kaya rin ako detailed mag-explain, kasi I used to be Director III of the D P C B before I was elected to Field Health. So this is very familiar to me how we operate. Yung pong council, they are composed of experts in their field. So you have oncologists in the cancer council, you have psychiatrists in the mental health council, you have infectious disease practitioners in the F P C council. Ang pinagkaiba po kasi kapag council versus nasa loob ng D O H, ang salary grade po ng gobyerno, as we know, is not enough to convince many of the internationally published and well-known experts to actually join the service. Most of them are private practitioners, but if they are part of a council, they gladly accept honoraria, they are able to provide advice na pino-process nung division na nasa loob ng D P C B. That's how they operate po, the D O H now. Now, having mentioned that, again, from the Field Health perspective, we're just waiting kung sino ba 'yung magsasabi sa amin kung ano 'yung C P G na gagamitin para popondahan ng Field Health. Either way or otherwise, Field Health is interested on who we shall be working with regarding the C P G. We leave this to the wise discretion of the House. Balikan ko lang po iyong numbers. So, as of April thirty, there are seven hundred thirty-two accredited Field Health accredited dentists, most of, most of which are distributed in private healthcare institutions. Uh, I heard po from our colleague from D O H that overall, it's a larger number practicing, four thousand four hundred forty-five. And although my colleague did not manifest it into the record, he might wish to confirm this, although nakita ko 'yung kodeko niya. Uh, six hundred thirty are private, and then three thousand eight hundred fifteen are government dentists. Ang tinatanong po ni Representative Go. If you notice, the number of accredited Field Health dentists is lower than the number of accredited, three thousand eight, uh, than the number of government dentists. Tatlong libo at walong daang government dentists, pero ang overall accredited ng Field Health, private plus government ay seven hundred thirty-two. Ngayon, yung pong private dentist, six hundred thirty, mas maliit. So actually, kung kihimay-himayin natin, lumalabas at yun ang basa namin, mas maraming private dentists ang accredited ng Field Health. As to what the reasons are, kung bakit ganun po, um, medyo kailangan natin himayin yun. But moving forward, 'yung Consulta Plus, to binanggit ko po earlier, yun po 'yung comprehensive outpatient benefit. Ano po 'yung magiging model sa Consulta? Consulta has a provider, a primary care provider, which is not a doctor, by the way. Misconception po na medical doctor 'yung Consulta provider. The Consulta provider is actually a unit. It's a team composed of a doctor, a pharmacist, a dentist, and other members of primary care. Ang payment method po ng Field Health sa Consulta is what we call capitation. The honorable representatives might have heard this, kasi nagkakampin rin po kami sa mga districts for Consulta registration for F P E. So the higher the number that you register and that you do first patient encounter with, minamultiplay yun by five hundred for government, uh, para bang, uh, Consulta providers. Yun 'yung capitation na fine-front load, or balak i-front load ng Field Health sa mga Consulta providers. As to how that amount is distributed between the doctor, the dentist, hindi po nakiki-alam ang Field Health. This is something which is important to explain, kasi po, ang misconception is five hundred per person 'yung binibigay ng Field Health, as ang baba ay ang daming inaasa sa five hundred, C B C, E C G, et cetera. Ang capitation po kasi, pakiyawan, kung twenty thousand 'yung pasyente sa isang area, multiply by five hundred, yun 'yung ibibigay dun sa provider. Hindi naman lahat 'yung twenty thousand mangangailangan ng E C G, hindi lahat mangangailangan ng C B C. Pero baka may mangailangan ng oral prophylaxis, baka may kailangan ng bonot dun sa twenty thousand na yun. Bahala na po 'yung provider at 'yung kanyang mga dentista na mag-usap kung paano sila maghahatian. Hindi na po mangini-alam ang Field Health. So key message po to recap, kailangan lang po namin malaman, sino po ba 'yung magpo-formulate nung clinical practice guidelines, at ano 'yung magiging itsura ng clinical practice guidelines? At pag nakita po namin yun, isasumit po yun sa Health Technology Assessment Council na magsasabi, for example, nagkukantuhan kami ng aking mga kapwa, hindi ko kapwa dentista, kapwa D O H, dentista po sila. Sabi ko, paano po 'yung pasta ngayon? Gumagamit pa ba ng Amalgam? Sabi sa akin ni Doktora, Doc, hindi na, kasi merong convention na bawal ng mercury. Yung Amalgam na alam po natin dati na mercury 'yung ginagamit, hindi na yun technology ngayon. May sinabi siyang ionic resin, high technology. Bahala na si H-TAC na magsabi, kung yun 'yung, kasi yun po 'yung rule ng H-TAC, ititingnan nila, tas parang anaitindihan nila yun, sabi nila, ah, eto 'yung cost-effective. Tapos pag natapos si H-TAC, tsaka papasok si Field Health actuary. Babalansiyan na po namin kung kaya namin bayaran, and hopefully, uh, Representative and, and Chair, yun po 'yung papasok na pambayad dun sa mga private, yun po 'yung tinatawag na subsidy. It's actually the capitation for primary care. We submit, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much for the very elaborate explanation, Dr. Albert Francis Domingo. Uh, before we proceed, uh, with a question or with a queries, clarification from the members, we'll just proceed first with another resource person so that we can see the overall picture. Let us hear the views of, from the Philippine Dental Association, Dr. Cheryl Del Rosario.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, and to the honorable members of this committee. Uh, on behalf of the Philippine Dental Association, uh, we are an accredited, integrated professional organization of the Professional Regulation Commission, composed of dentists, dental hygienists, and dental technologists. Uh, we fully support the House Bill, uh, institutionalizing, uh, national oral health program. Um, according to the W H O, oral health has long been neglect, neglected in global health. However, the good news is oral diseases are largely preventable. So dear honorable members of this august body, let us champion oral health by passing this, uh, bill, no? Uh, to make sure that oral health services are within reach to as many Filipinos as possible and to significantly help our country improve their oral health. Um, and with due respect, uh, to the author of this bill, um, to kindly include the Philippine Dental Association as one of the stakeholders in the implementation of this bill, um, to strengthen, um, public-private partnership. Uh, we are a strong sixteen thousand eight hundred members. We have one hundred, uh, one chapters nationwide. We have twenty-one affiliate societies, two integrated organizations, no? Although we are a non-stock, nonprofit organization, we have partners who can, uh, actually help us, no, in the implementation of our, uh, oral health programs. And, uh, there was a question, uh, a while ago regarding the dentist-patient ratio, which is around one, one is to fifty thousand. Um, one of the main problem that we see here is because of the low salary grade being offered to our dentist. Uh, and, uh, we already have a pending position paper, uh, regarding this, uh, to address this matter. Uh, that would be all, uh, Mr. Speaker. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cheryl Del Rosario. Now we'll proceed with another resource person from the Commission on Higher Education, Dr. Arturo De Leon. Vaya, zoom.
Mr. Chair, while waiting probably from the
Yes, while waiting for Dr. Arturo De Leon, we'll hear
Yeah, yeah. I would like to ask from Field Health, uh, bottom line, uh, ano 'yung package na ngayon na binibigay niyo for dental cases?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ano, ano 'yung boto, ngayon, as of now, given the situation of the country as far as, uh, dental hygiene and oral hygiene concerns that we have?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, as of now, it's mostly inpatient, so it's not even oral hygiene, it's not a primary
Inpatient, those who are
Admitted to
Admitted to hospital, meron mga
May case rates po.
Uh, may case rate. Uh, ano 'yung mga cases natin? Let's say, nagkaroon ng implant, is that part of it or no?
Um, allow me, Mr. Chair, to just quickly look at my, uh, list. Meron po tayong, uh, just to read, uh, for example, pulpitis, necrosis of pulp, pulgang green, abnormal hard tissue, uh, in the pulp, acute apical periodontitis of pulpal origin. Um, the dentist might help me explain what this is.
So, so yung mga yan, kailangan na, ano sila, uh, implant, meaning, I mean, in, in service, dapat, uh, na-confine sila sa hospital?
Opo.
Pag, uh, pumunta lang for consultation, hindi kasama yun?
Wala po sa ngayon, Mr. Chair.
Pero ang pinaka-problema natin nga, 'yung ano eh, 'yung mga ano eh, sabi niyo, preventable. How, uh, can you prevent when we don't encourage them to go to the dentist by not providing, uh, itong ganito? Yung, ano natin, yun, yung mga parang operation na ito ang ginagawa ng madentista.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Siyung gum nila, uh, na-infect or something, tapos na-confine.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So yun po 'yung birabanggit namin na, moving forward, yung pong Consulta package, doon na po ipapasok ang preventive oral care. Kasi po, 'yung Consulta package is really meant for primary care, all conditions. So ngayon po kasi, 'yung capitation is five hundred per head, uh, pero there's only a fixed, uh, thirteen para bang diagnostic tests and the number of conditions na hindi pa kasama sa ngayon ang oral health.
So dito sa Consulta na ito, how many thousands of, uh, uh, yung, inalocate ninyo na worth five hundred pesos per, uh, per month ito, no?
Per year po yan, per person.
Okay, so all cases ito, ilang ang binabayaran ninyo ngayon sa lahat ng mga kasong ganito?
Uh, the current data, Mr. Chair, uh, ang mababa pa ho, kasi hindi po ho sa full swing, nasa one million Filipinos pa lam po 'yung naka-register.
So whether one million yan, so anytime, uh, any, every year, you pay twenty million pesos? I mean, five, uh, ano ito, fifty million pesos, or five hundred million, kasi one million eh?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So you're spending five hundred million, uh, uh, because of this, uh, ano, itong one million na naka-register? Irregardless of whether the service is worth five hundred million, you pay five hundred million to this Consulta service providers?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Have you evaluated how many cases have been, uh, uh, let's say, serviced by this Consulta service providers?
Currently, Mr. Chair, the numbers we have, uh, do not yet, uh, show the, the services, the actual, kumbaga, cases, 'yung diseases na sinaservice po nila. Um, hindi po ho namin naabot yun. Nasa level po ho kami nung what we call first patient encounter or health screening.
Yeah, but you have been paying five hundred million every year since you have
Uh, hindi pa naman po, Mr. Chair, no, no. The, the number, the five hundred million, the estimate is correct, but in actual disbursements, uh, unfortunately, mababa po ho 'yung disbursement.
Yeah, but if the number registered is one million
It will go up.
Uh, then you pay five hundred each. Sa ngayon, how much ang binabayaran niyo? How many, imbes na one million, ilan ang ano?
Uh, I do not have the exact number, Mr. Chair, but I can look it up. Hindi pa ho, definitely malayo pa po tayo dun sa five hundred, uh, million.
So when do you say that, uh, you will now pay for five hundred thousand people or two hundred thousand people? Meron bang triggering point? Meron bang triggering point that this is the number that you will pay every, every year?
Meron, meron po, Mr. Chair. So, for example, if, if in the district, 20,000 people, wag naman 20,000, kahit 2,000 muna, 2,000 people show up and have their FPE, what as we call it, first patient encounter, bibigyan na po sila ng 40% of 500, first tranche po yun, front-loading.
So kailangan mag, ano sila, actual patient ito?
Yes, sir.
So and this are reported by the service providers?
Yes po, there's an EMR where their, their details are captured. Actually, they're required to take a photo, tapos papasok po yun sa PhilHealth database.
So without reporting to this CONSULTA service providers office for consultation, you don't pay? Only those, yun, yun?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so yun 'yung cost natin, 500, and they can go anywhere? Base, 'yung available areas ninyo na merong CONSULTA service provider?
By law, Mr. Chair, by the UHC Act, they can choose, Filipinos can choose your provider of choice, but once you choose that provider, you have to stay with that provider for the year. Kasi po aalagaan kayo ng doktor eh, kung siya po talaga 'yung doktor ninyo at panatag na kayo sa kanya, the whole year, sa kanya na po kayo.
Sa Baguio po meron ng CONSULTA doon?
Ah, yes, we were just there a few weeks ago, meron pong CONSULTA providers, pero public po, public.
Ah, public, san yun?
Hindi ko, I can look the details.
Yeah, okay, okay. Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, but we'll go back to our resource person from CHED, Dr. Arturo De Leon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of this August body and all of the rest of the resource persons. As of now, the CHED TCD has yet to finalize our position paper on this matter. However, allow me just to, to share with you what we have been discussing about these endeavors, particularly the institutionalizing of a national oral health programs as provided in the proposed bill. We support, we support such kind of legal endeavor. In fact, with the help of other members of the council, we have encouraged the 31 dental schools to put more premium on public health dentistry with adoption of the universal healthcare in the curriculum enhancement of those dental colleges. We are now pushing the envelope of dental service, which is actually concentrated on clinical practice of the deep varnish disciplines to a better and more relevant community dentistry aware dentist, no? A lot of our products, a lot of our graduates are, were trained on how to practice the clinical, I mean, clinical dentistry. And although we have three distinct subjects on community dentistry, we, we decided to highlight, or so we say, give more weight on the how would be, how would they appreciate their role as a licensed dentist in the implementation of a national oral health program? Having said this one, the CHED is also encouraging all the SUC, the state universities and colleges, as mandated by the past previous administration to offer dentistry in their locality. Actually, one of the concern raised a while ago is the dentist population ratio of 1 is to 50,000, which is actually a very, very wanting. Although it poses a, a, a big concern on, on the part of the profession, what adds to the challenges is the distribution of licensed dentists. A lot of those 16,000 actively practicing Filipino dentists are concentrated in the NCR region. So implementation of a national oral health program might be undermined. So we encourage, the Commission on Higher Education is encouraging local government units to support their local colleges and universities, particularly the state universities and colleges, to offer the college of dentistry, having their graduates and their students as a force multiplier in the national manpower for implementation of a national oral health program. We also are very much involved, the Philippine Association of Dental Colleges is, is support, is, is support of the Philippine Dental Association in coming up with the standard of care, protocols, and finally, the clinical procedural guidelines that the, the other regulatory agencies have been looking for in support of their, this kind of programs, particularly the HMOs. Our observation is that, although, our observation is that you are right, the HMO is centering on curative or procedures that are already beyond prevention. If we can concentrate on preventative measures and service included in the, in the package, that will be a good, a good approach in this national effort to increase the awareness and preventative measures on particularly on the, in curtailing this preventable disease. Also, we would like also to, to take note that the high 70% or 80% of the Filipino dentists are private practitioners. And a certain, a small percentage of our, of our manpower are just, are hospital-based. A lot of us are working in a standalone dental clinic. If the HMO providers would reconsider not to include them in their, in the, in the pool of manpower, that would be a better augmentation of the manpower for implementation of the national oral health program. Budget is, is a number one concern. You know, I was, I am a past president of the Philippine Dental Association and, and the government agreed to have a national dental health month celebration as part of public awareness on this global oral health disease, no? The caries and periodontal diseases. But we alone are the ones raising the, the budget as a private entity in making sure that every month, every month, the Filipino people are again and again revisiting, revisiting the ways and means of how to prevent caries and periodontal problem. Usually, easily, alam ko ni Dr. Chair na 5 to 6 million, no, every year. As a private entity, malaki pong budget to na we raise for every, every year just to comply with the government's effort to instill awareness on this kind of disease. Your honor, we will be perhaps ready to submit our position paper through the Commission on Higher Education. Thank you for your time and we salute you for your concern in this national efforts in preventing these dental diseases. Marami salamat po.
Marami salamat po, Dr. Arturo De Leon, honorable Marco.
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask the gentleman from CHED. How many colleges and universities, particularly state colleges and universities, offering dentistry in the country? Out of the 114 SUCs, how many are offering dentistry as a course?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Please proceed with your response, Dr. De Leon.
Sir, since, since time immemorial, there's only one state university that's offering dental program. That's University of the Philippines Manila. But during the term of past president Duterte, a lot of university colleges are applied, no? One of which is the Western Visayas University in the south, no? That's just, that's the latest add-on, so it makes two, two state universities and colleges that are offering, or college of dentistry. As of this record, there are 31, 31 dental colleges offering dental program across the country, the 10 of which are in the metro Manila, and the rest are spread in the northern and southern Luzon, Visayas, and Mindanao.
Do you think we need, do you, do you think we need more universities and colleges to offer dentistry among these state universities and colleges?
I, may I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, sir.
I think apart from the number of offering, it's the distribution of.
So, but you agree that we need more in order to cater to the big growing population of the country? Because if ratio is 1 is to 5, how many?
50,000.
Ano ba 'yung optimal ratio that we should have? How many, Mr. De Leon?
If, if, given the chance po ako, 1 is to 25 or 30, or lower.
30,000?
Opo.
So bali dapat bawasan ng 50%? So that means we need to double? Because we have, you know, ah, 'yung bill to, itong doktor para sa bayan, diba? Ah, we have asked all the, ito, we have the scholarship program for medical doctors and this provides also return service. Okay ba sa'yo if we can come out with dentas, the dent, ano yun? Ah, dentista para sa bayan, similar to the doktor para sa bayan? So we can encourage more practitioners who will work with the government?
Maganda pong proposal yan.
Maganda po ba yun?
Sa United States po, ang ginagawa nila, they have what they call local champions. Each of the LGUs, sa kanila model, would send their scholars to the, the various dental colleges and they will be compelled to return back to their provinces.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking earlier, kung ilan ang ating mga colleges and universities offering dentistry, particularly SUCs, I'm talking of SUCs here, how many are offering dentistry? Ngayon nabanggit mo, UP lang at saka 'yung Western Visayas State University in Iloilo. So.
Two out of 31 po.
Two out of 31?
Opo.
So I think I need to talk to all these presidents of the different SUCs para ma-isama natin to. So we can address the big disparity in terms of the offerings. Kasi kung yun ang problema natin, dapat meron tayong strategic solution dito. Kasi whatever law we will pass, kung wala namang support ang, walang graduates na gustong magsilbi sa iba't ibang barangay o isbang lugar, at wala pang direksyon ito, at wala pang concern body to really manage it, eh, palagi ko mahirap ito, Mr. Chair. So that's another problem that we have understood today, Mr. Chair.
May, may I add something, Mr. Chair?
Just proceed, Dr. De Leon.
Opo, I, I must correct myself, kasama na po 'yung under permit station, Bicol University. So tatlo na po sila, Western Visayas, Bicol University, and of course, University of the Philippines Manila. May I just, may I just give my observation? A lot of graduates from the provinces would go into urban practice because, as you might be aware of, dentistry is a practice that is founded upon technology. So we need some support, equipment support, technological support to make sure that we have optimized our practice and optimize our chances or opportunity to serve other people. So dapat siguro i-encourage din po na ma-equip 'yung standalone hospital o clinic ng mga dentista. Meron kami dating proposal na pag dental equipment o mga equipment on dentistry. Sana po sana, ma-reconsider na po 'yung mga tariffs or taxes para ma-encourage 'yung mga provinces, mga, mga, mga na provincial dentists na to upgrade, upgrade their dental clinic. Kaya hindi rin siguro nakaka-serve mabuti dahil, because of the challenges na ma-equipment. Malaking bagay po ang magagawa ng.
Pag government entity naman, mga SUCs yan, nakalagay diyan, pwedeng basta magamit para sa educational purpose. They can be extended from this tariff if they import from other countries, no? I think, yeah, I think we have a lot of things to do as far as itong program na ito, Mr. Chair. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, baka pwede na saama na rin yun sa mga private dentists na para pag bumili kami na equipment. Meron na rin pong considerable, ano, support.
Magkakaproblema po tahi diyan kung popondotin 'yung mga private dentists. Mahirap po yun. Ang kailangan natin 'yung magtayo ng mga dental services sa iba't ibang public hospitals. At para magawa yan, dapat merong isang.
Champion.
Ni doctor, ah, ni Congresswoman Noel, eh, merong either bureau, it can be a council that will really drive this particular program. At 'yung mamamaala diyan, dapat may kaalaman sa dentistry. Hindi 'yung graduate ng political science, kamukha ko, eh, hindi tayo pwedeng. So thank you, thank you, Dr. De Leon.
Salamat din po sa pagkakataon, salamat po.
Salamat po, Dr. De Leon, Representative Marco, and in fact, if I may add, we can look into adding it into the specialty centers under the universal, universal healthcare system. Sa ngayon po meron 17, why not 18? And that is dental services. Because it's an instrument based and malaking bagay 'yung may center dahil improvement ng mga machineries and all, an instrument under the dental healthcare. Well, may I hear from members of this committee if any other clarificatory questions or comments?
Siguro, Mr. Chair. After, Mr. Chair, after hearing all the discussions and I, I would like to move that we consolidate the, how many bills? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. To consolidate the seven bills, House Bills 1104, 1487, 2520, 3986, 2095, 1945, and 3162 into one substitute bill using the approved bill during the 18th Congress, and that's House Bill 1104, as the lead bill subject to amendments and style, especially on the provision of either organizing the Bureau of Dental Service or a council that will really focus on addressing the concerns as I stated earlier. I saw move, Mr. Chair.
Before we proceed to the approval, we have two resource person who are waiting with us early on. Let us just hear a few briefly from the Professional Regulations Commission, Board of Dentistry, Dr. Melinda Garcia.
Thank you po and good morning, Mr. Chair, to the honorable members of the committee. Yes, well, the Professional Regulation Commission, the Professional Regulatory Board of Dentistry and other health professional regulatory boards came up with a one-page position paper. Before I read, I would like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues for the board, Honorable Sparagas Go Lapete Gumanlag, and the chief of our PRB secretary, Secretary Division Attorney Lo Belika Bautista, who are likewise joining us online. The PRC supports the legislative advocacy to strengthen the oral health program of the government in line with the trust of the Universal Healthcare Act to provide all Filipinos access to quality and affordable healthcare goods and services. After review of the seven pending bills, we have the following observations, comments, and recommendations. First, to address the longstanding problem on the country's fragmented healthcare system, the measure seeks to institutionalize a national oral health program to be administered by the oral health service under the DOH while at the same time strengthening the centers for health development at the regional level. All planned strategies and resources related to oral health shall be implemented in accordance with the National Oral Health Program in order to foster an inclusive and integrated oral healthcare system. Second, the bill espouses for a robust and stable oral health workforce at all levels of the healthcare system through the creation of additional plantilla positions for all oral health professionals. professionals at the national level and establishment of oral health unit in every rural health unit. While these proposals are laudable, it is nonetheless recognized that the bigger problem is the limited supply of dentists in the local workforce. Based on the PRC data alone, there are 60,559 registered dentists, but only 31,660 are with active or updated professional identification cards as of March of 2023. Maldistribution is another concern as a major chunk of the practicing dentists are based in the NCR, living distant provinces like the Zamboanga Peninsula and Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region with the least number of practicing dentists. More so, while the other bills did mention dentists and dental aids in establishment of oral health or dental units in every rural health unit, the role of dental hygienist in the delivery of basic oral healthcare services should be recognized in the proposed measures instead, and for which there should be allocated plantilla positions for them as well. Relatively, the compensation of dentist practitioners in the government raises also a valid concern as many dentists would rather go into private practice than to be in government service. Based on the prevailing compensation structure, the entry-level salary grade for dentists is only salary grade 17 for dentists too. Although there is a plantilla position for dentist five, which is salary grade 24 compensation, there is very limited number of dentist five positions available. Third, in the true spirit of promoting and implementing national oral health program to the country, the priority and focus of the oral health program should be more on the promotive, preventive, and curative aspects of healthcare services delivery. This means that the program task should begin with the prevention and control of oral health programs and with strong emphasis on public accessibility to other oral healthcare services. Thus, the provisions in the bill relating to strengthening and the capability of public health systems and facilities, which include the allocation of adequate resources to ensure the provision of essential oral health services are of utter relevance and importance. For it further, it is respectfully proposed that in the exercise of the policymaking powers of the oral health service, appropriate coordination and consultation be undertaken with relevant government agencies like the PRC and the Professional Regulatory Board of Dentistry, particularly on policies that would touch on the regulation of the practice of the dentistry profession. This is in relation to the proposed power and function of the OHS to coordinate and oversee the development of human resources for oral health with the PRC and other concerned government agencies. And finally, the PRC was against cited in House Bill 1104 in reference to the prevention of illegal practice in oral health. There is no objection interposed on this provision mandating the PRC to adopt an effective regulatory framework to prevent illegal practice in the oral health profession, except for some corrections on the designation of PRC as the Professional Regulation, Hindi po regulatory, um, Commission, and Philippine Dental Association, which should be referred to in the bill more appropriately as the accredited integrated professional organization for the dentistry profession. Uh, 'yun lang po, thank you po, sir. Thank you po.
Thank you very much, Doctora Garcia, from the Board of Dentistry under PRC. And, um, we'll... Yes, of course, uh, we'll, uh, wait for the submission of your position. We'll go next, briefly, from the manifestation uh, of Doctora Shal Malane Ampatuan, the manifestation for Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Regions in Muslim, Mindanao. Doctor Ampatuan? So, uh, is still she around? So, uh, we'll proceed with the pending, uh, any other comments about the, the resource persons abuse?
Mister Chair, I just have one question from the PRC.
Yes, I may proceed, Honorable Mark.
Yeah, uh, sa PRC, may I know how many percent are passing dun sa, uh, licensure example dentist, uh, the commissioner?
Uh, ano po, board lang po ako.
Board, okay.
Po, uh, sir, ano po, um, ito pong kakarealis lang po namin last week, no? Uh, it's 691 out of 1,479, so that is 46.72%. Last November, December of 2022, 1,431 out of 2,341, 61.12%. Medyo bumaba po. Ina-analyze po po namin 'yung data, pero ang tingin po namin, kasi 'yung kumaha po nito may, ito po 'yung first batch po nung nag-online because of the pandemic. So mukhang kulang po sila kasi may practical example kami eh. Doon po sila medyo bumaba po talaga.
On the average, uh, ilan po 'yung percent for the last 3 to 5 years?
Opo, ang average po namin nasa 50% po.
50%, so 'yung lahat po nito, mga first takers ito, o uh, ano bang percentage itong mga first taker, at saka 'yung second, third taker?
Okay, ah, okay po. Combine po 'to, no? Pero, um, 75% po rito na pumapa sa are first takers po. 'Yung pong aming repeaters, eh, I would say ang pumapasalang po talaga, mga 30% lang po.
Ah, gado, oo.
Although we have refresher course po eh.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Mister.
Thank you so much, Doctora Garcia, and Representative Marco. We have a pending motion, and that is the approval of the said bill, which was silently discussed and, uh, subject to its amendments and style. Do I hear any second to the motion by...
Second, Mister Chair.
Any objection? Hearing none. The bill is discussed extensively, that is, institutionalizing the oral health program, um, subject to its amendment with the lead bill, Bill, House Bill 1104, uh, as approved during, uh, last debate in Congress, is hereby approved. Thank you so much. Congratulations to everyone.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Arnie Rocke?
May I move that all the members who are present and in Zoom be co-authors, subject to, with permission with the author of this substitute bill?
There is a motion duly seconded. All members present is hereby co-author of this bill. Thank you so much. Adjourn.
So, if there are no other matters, Mister Chair, I move that we adjourn, uh, this meeting.
Second, Mister Chair.
Uh, there's a motion, a German, the session for today, our committee hearing under Committee on Health is hereby adjourned. Thank you so much.